Hi, how are you?
Erin.
Yeah, it's just.
It's tight.
So tight this. Yeah, buzz is still up in the air if he wants to be there.
I got him.
That is cool. Yeah, let me know when a meeting is. After Wednesday.
Well, you can always just tweet.
Actually, after Thursday.
Throw your stuff in the stands.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's always a wise career move.
Yeah. Oh, that's a, that's. Hey, you can have a look. College football. Yeah, it's going well today.
That's just come back to tomato.
I can't see here. That's, that's.
I don't know that.
Yes, you can't see. No, really.
What type of.
Sounds like they need to see any of any bits. No, it's just, it's so close and, you know.
That's the first time. Yeah. Lot of water, beautiful. Tons of. And it's like. It's in my whole my driveway. I had a sense of.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Reynoldsburg City Council Meeting of September 27, 2021 to order. The time is now 6:31. I'm Council President Angie Jenkins, and I would like to welcome you to Reynoldsburg City Council Chambers. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance following the invocation. The invocation this evening will be given by Councilman Stacy Baker.
May we all rise in bowerheads. O heavenly Father, we come to you this day and pray and ask that you watch over those who are fighting this COVID-19 and pray that you protect those who have not contracted COVID-19 and make sure that our health is, is in perfect health and that we pray for those who are wanting and are hurting at this hour, Father God. And I pray that you bless everybody that's in this chamber tonight as we go forth and do the city's business. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Would the clerk please call the role? Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Strickland.
Present.
Councilmember Savadi.
Here.
Councilmember Peckerow.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember Baker, uh, Cutner.
Here.
And President Jenkins.
Here.
At this time, we'll have the approval of the agenda. There are changes to tonight's agenda. A motion has been added as Section 9B. Are there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Saying none, the agenda stands approved as corrected. Next, we'll have the approval of minutes. Approval of City Council regular meeting minutes of September 13, 2021. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? Saying none, the minutes stand approved as submitted. Next, we'll have our community comments. The community comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for citizens to address council. Citizens may bring matters to the attention of city council or discuss items on the agenda. Before addressing city council, members of the public are asked to complete a speaker's form and give it to the clerk. The council president will invite speakers to step to the microphone, give their name and their address. All remarks should be addressed to council as a whole and not exceed three minutes. Are there any comments from the public? Madam President, we have three. Ms. Tia Johnson, if you'll step to the podium and give your name and address.
Hello, everyone. My hands is full. My name is Tia Johnson. I live at 7311 Foxfield Drive. I'm here to talk to you guys today about a recent event. On maybe three weeks ago, I got a call from my 10-year-old daughter. The police are here. I'm in shock, all the emotions you can imagine running through your body when you get that call. Why are they there? I don't know. My oldest daughter is talking to them. I call her, she doesn't answer. A few minutes later, I get a call from an unrecognized number. It's the officer. He said that the police have been called because your business trucks have been parked on the street for more than three hours. What? I started a business last year in the middle of a pandemic because it was necessary for me to pivot with my current role. I was frustrated, one, that the police were called for such a minor infraction. I was more frustrated that I started a business where my neighbor, only one, had said, "Cool idea. How do I sign up?" They didn't knock on my door. They didn't leave a friendly note, "Can you move your trucks?" I've traveled with this equipment to Cleveland, to Bisciris with our contract and gotten nothing but great reviews. "Oh, my gosh, how did you get started? Tell me more about your business." Yet in my own backyard, the police are being called. So I'm asking from council, is that really necessary to use public resources for something like that? How can we maybe review or look at different options when there's something minor that wouldn't cause such a frantic from a single parent raising three kids? Luckily, my 18-year-old daughter is there. She's able to compose and handle herself. But that is my ask. That is my concern, and thank you so much for your time. Any questions?
What is your business?
I'm glad you asked. So after your trash is collected, we come and we offer curbside cleaning. So we clean, sanitize, and deodorize your 96-gallon container, your 64-gallon container. We also offer commercial service for dumpster cleaning. So I know we've all dealt with the flies, the maggots, and odors of trash can. We now offer a curbside solution. That's my.
Ms. Johnson, thank you for coming here this evening. How big are your vehicles? I mean, your trucks, how big are they?
Uh, I don't know the actual size. I would say they both fit in my driveway. So luckily, to speak to the police, the officer was super nice. First, he was like, "This is an awesome idea. I didn't even know anything was like this. Will you just park them in your driveway and that will solve the problem?" So he was really friendly. He was super nice. It was a very pleasant experience after it was all said and done. It was the range of emotions that you feel when you get a call like that, all the things that go through your head, and to find out it was so minor. It was like, that's ridiculous. Like, send me a postcard. Write me a note, right? Like, don't send the police to my house. You never know what could happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sarah Gold, and I would please ask all the speakers to speak into the microphone so the livestream audience can hear you clearly and council members as well. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sarah Gold, 4270 Morse Road, Columbus, 43230. Thank you so much for having me. I am the Director of Development at Skilken Gold Real Estate Development, here tonight speaking about a proposed Sheetz at the northeast corner of Bryce and Main Street. Today, it's a vacant Walgreens. We know it's a very prominent corner with certain design objectives and real intersection, traffic, safety concerns, which is why we wanted to come and talk to you first before diving into the details and going through the formal development process. Tonight, I have Erin Hensley with me from Sheetz Real Estate. We've got Eric Elizondo. He's the SVP of Operations from Skilken Gold. And we also have Kareem Ammer, who would be the project manager for this proposed project. Sheetz is working on many projects and many sites in the city of Reynoldsburg, as I'm sure you've heard. Sheetz wants to make a real positive investment in the community. At the project, with the projects that we're looking at, we're talking about about $30 million of investment in the community, generating about 120 new jobs. So that investment in the community is strong and here. We have heard and we're communicating with staff that there are, you know, real safety concerns about this intersection. In your packet, one of the first pages is the engineer drawings from EMHNT, a design engineering firm. We know that the city of Reynoldsburg has been working to look at the realignment of that intersection. We hear you. If you go to the next page, you'll see a very rough sketch of what we call a test fit. It's just our first proposed site plan. Nothing's set in stone. But what I want you to see on this is that we're taking into consideration the necessary right-of-way to donate to the city of Reynoldsburg in order to make this realignment and traffic improvements at this intersection work. We're also open to having conversations about helping to contribute financially to the overall intersection realignment and design. Basically, we're a willing partner, and we want to make it work, and we want the development to succeed, and we want the area to be safe for everyone. Finally, we know that the site is not zoned properly for what we would need to do. So we would need to go through the formal rezoning process. We know there are certain design objectives and criteria that's outlined by the city, and we're willing to meet those. We are willing to kind of dress up the building, meet the minimum height requirements, and really work with you all to design a building that's appropriate for the city of Reynoldsburg and for this site specifically. So tonight, I know we don't have much time, but I wanted to have a bit of an open conversation and dialogue and hear from any of you who have some kind of comment and feedback as we start to really dive into the details. So thank you so much, and I'd appreciate to hear anything from any of you.
Ms. Gold.
Yes.
You had a presentation time in a few minutes from now, so I'm going to ask that you sit down, and we'll save that, and you'll get to come back up.
Okay.
And can go into this more thoroughly, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Brusque, next, please.
I'm going to pull the mask down so we can hear each other. But the reason, oh, Norm Brusque, 1861 Crossway Court in Reynoldsburg. The reason I'm up here is these masks. I don't see the city doing anything about it, not being active, not being proactive, not doing anything. I'm very passionate about this. I do believe personally that it's very important that we do something on that, but at least discuss it, at least come up with a decision on it. But I don't want the decision to be political. I don't want it to be because we're worried that people are going to be mad at us for doing it. That's what the council's for, and I count on that. So please, give it a thought, give it some discussion, and please, let's be proactive. Let's try to slow this pandemic down a bit. And that's about all I got to say.
Thank you. Madam President, we have one email comment. This comment is from Linda Young at 7675 Godfrey Circle in Reynoldsburg. My name is Linda Young, and I'm a Reynoldsburg resident living near the intersection of Palmer and Graham Road. First, I would like to speak to the intersection of Palmer and Graham in regards to the five-way discussion. To make a left turn south onto Graham from Palmer, the light at the five-way must be red coming north so that there is a break in the traffic pattern. If there is no stoppage, such as a continuous turn from a five-way coming north on Graham, there will be no break in traffic for those on Palmer turning south. This will definitely cause a safety issue. As of today, with the Main Street project underway, you are at the mercy of a kind driver going southbound to let you out as the traffic from 3:30 until 6:30 PM is backed up past the Methodist Church. Again, you will still need to find a break in traffic coming northbound to make this left. As to the five-way, I, like most residents, are frustrated with the traffic flow there. I travel through that intersection multiple times a day. I'm retired and can travel anytime I wish. If I can make this clear, I see this issue almost every day. A driver is coming north on 256 and desires to make a left turn onto Livingston. They pull out to where they can't see the light. It changes and they freeze. Those of us coming south on Graham and angling left onto 256 stop, wait for the cars pulled way out too far to either go ahead or make a turn, try to back up, or just sit there and make two lanes of Graham Road traffic merge to get around the vehicle. Last week, they set records with four cars in the intersection. Lots of cars honking. The other issue is cars in the wrong lane northbound on 256. More cars honking as they jump into another lane. I have been traveling this road for so long that I'm always hanging back to see what happens in front of me. You are having this discussion because you already know these issues. I wish I had an answer, but I'm afraid if cars can't decide which lane they should be in now, an extremely busy five-way will not eliminate the safety hazards we have now. I have been a proponent for some time of widening the little bridge on Graham after seeing mothers pushing strollers across it. I understand this has already been addressed. Thank you. With that said, I'm hopeful you will keep the Graham-Palmer intersection in mind when making your decisions. Thank you. Are there any comments from council? Are there any comments from the mayor?
Madam President, of course, one moment, please. I'm going to introduce some guests to come up here. As you can see by what I think is an incredibly appropriate shirt, if you want to show council, not only are we Buckeye fans, we are also very much against the idea of cancer. So I would like to introduce a proclamation today for childhood cancer. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children, 1 in 285 children in the United States will be diagnosed by their 20th birthday, and whereas 46 children per day or 16,790 children are diagnosed with cancer annually in the United States, and whereas there are approximately 40,000 children on active treatment at any given time, and whereas the average age of a diagnosis is six years old compared to 66 years for adult cancer diagnosis, and whereas on average, there's been a 0.6% increase in the incidence per year since the mid-1970s, resulting in an overall increase of 24% over the last 40 years, and whereas 2/3 of childhood cancer patients will have chronic health conditions as a result of their terminate treatment toxicity, with 1/4 being classified as severe to life-threatening, and whereas approximately 1/2 of childhood cancer families rate the associated financial toxicity due to out-of-pocket expenses as considerable to severe, and whereas in the last 20 years, only four new drugs have been approved by the FDA to specify treatment with childhood cancer, and whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level, including Friends of Faith Pardon Foundation, are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support, and whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently, dedicating their expertise to cure child cancer, whereas too many children are affected by this deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Now, therefore, I, Joe Begany, Mayor of the City of Reynoldsburg, Ohio, proclaim September 2021 as childhood cancer awareness. And with us today are, if you want to introduce yourselves.
We're the Tibbs family. This is my Douglas, my wife Shannon, and our son Sean.
Thank you very much. If you'd just care, first couple of quick pictures.
Oh, you're.
Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. One more. There you go. Congratulations.
Madam President, in addition to that, I did want to pass a long word. Some of us may know, but a resident of our city who of some notoriety recently passed, again unfortunately of cancer, Supreme Grand Master Che, a 10th degree black belt in Taekwondo, the first-generation student of the founder of Taekwondo, passed away on September 20, 2021, at 75 years of age. Supreme Grand Master Che was a Korean refugee who came to America in 1971 with $25 to his name and an extremely limited grasp of the English language. He moved to the Columbus area in 1973 and opened his world headquarters in Reynoldsburg in 1986, where it stayed in continuous operation for 35 years. Over the next 50 years, he would train tens of thousands of students, over 1,000 black-belt students, dozens of national and international champions, and four Olympians. He was the 1988 Olympic women's coach. He was a champion for Korean-American relations and businesses, serving on several governor and presidential committees. He was a true humanitarian, given unselfishly to charities and fundraisers in the area and offering scholarships to students who wished to train, most of the time at no cost. I wanted to share that because, again, the connection to Reynoldsburg, choosing Reynoldsburg as his home and in the Bryce Road corridor, as someone who will be deeply missed by our community. He actually also, you know, helped my son through some medical issues as well and a number of other community members. Having said that, I do have some other things that I would like to kind of update you on. For those of you that were unable to attend the Flooding Town Hall, we have kind of gotten some news and updated information. At your desk, you should have the packet that was provided to those that attended the Flooding Town Hall, along with some additional floodplain maps to kind of give more detail to the area in question. We had FEMA, the National Flood Insurance Board, and the Franklin County Emergency Management and Homeland Security presentation there. But what it really comes down to is what's going to happen not only this year, but in the next few years, given the challenges of that area in the flood zone and the potential for excessive rain. First of all, round delay work has actually already begun as far as storm sewer work on Roundelay Road that has been shifted from another location last year after last year's flood. Earlier this morning, we had a conversation with the engineers at EMHNT to begin the work of a comprehensive study of the Reynoldsburg portion of the Blacklick watershed and the neighborhoods it impacts, specifically the one located primarily off Briar Cliff, but also kind of extending all the way throughout. We have talked about a number of different things, including engaging in conversations with the United States Geological Survey to install a detection system, and it sounds just pretty much like it is, that you would actually have something placed in the Blacklick watershed where when the water gets to a certain point, it would actually coordinate with the National Weather Service and also provide information to the residents in the area that they are detecting a potential for flash flooding. While it may not necessarily prevent the flooding, but what it could do is allow residents to make any kind of needed changes, moving cars, putting a floor plug in, something like that, to try and minimize any potential water damage in that area. We have also engaged in conversations, as you'll see a little bit later tonight, with the Franklin County Emergency Management and Homeland Security to talk about flood mitigation options, including potential opportunities for residents to sell at market price their homes to. price their homes to the city with FEMA's support for demolition to eliminate the flooding nature overall. Overall, that was the recommendation of those individuals who were here, the experts in their fields. It is not a short process. It is not a process that anyone wants to take lightly. However, a number of residents did express interest in that at the meeting and more specifically in the days that followed. Two other options that I did want to come up with that are not going to be available at this time, however, we are going to continue to kind of get some more information on it. One of the more common options was dredging of Black Lick Creek. Dredging itself was not considered a viable option by any of the organizations that were represented. However, they did say that continuing to open up the streamway, to remove debris, things of that nature throughout the entire area would be a paramount concern, and we're taking steps on our side to do what we can with that and provide those resources. The other one was just, again, a little bit more, not a feasible process, of widening Black Lick Creek. There are other issues as well as dealing with potential development in and around, and more specifically, north of the city of Reynoldsburg that is outside of our jurisdiction. Conversations have been in with Columbus, but again, it's a very large watershed, and any major changes to it would be probably an astronomical financial consideration for all the municipalities involved. But I did want to give you that specific information for the town hall. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and I will continue to keep council and the community members updated as we get more information in and what the process is for what a comprehensive plan looks like that will hopefully establish some legitimate options to minimize, if not correct, certain issues that have occurred in the area.
Mayor, I do have a question for you. So this map that you're showing, is this the most up-to-date map that's...
Correct. The FEMA map that is released was, that one should be in 2012, I believe, is what the most recent map is. That is actually from what my understanding, and again, we're all working in government here, so we know that it takes a long time. Those are the recent maps. I don't believe the next updated version of it is going for the area will be available for, I think, about a decade more. However, that being said, individuals can contract and look at individual engineering's form to do that if they want it to be either added to or, in some cases, removed from the floodway. If you'll notice, a majority of the houses listed on the eastern side of White Butterfly, Promise Court, Medallion Court, and Peggy's Cove are all in the floodway. If you can kind of imagine that if that was open land, as it were, if that was an open land as it is right now, none of those houses in that area would actually be allowed to be built in today's day and age with the standards that we use. So that's one of the reasons why FEMA is recommending going with more of a flood mitigation, because ultimately, there's not going to be an option to prevent future flooding. The best they can do is minimize it unless, again, the properties are then removed at market value, not at a discount or anything like that.
I have a question. Is the information from the meeting on our website for those who did not attend?
Yes, the link is going to be uploaded to it. We are having some difficulty. We also wanted to make sure that we got a wider map to be used that showed the floodway. While this area is the only area where actual residents and homes are in the flood zone, the watershed is obviously wide enough, you can see from some of the other pictures. We wanted to make sure we got the most up-to-date maps. And the presentation that FEMA was going to give, which was kind of cut short a little bit by some of the comments and the questions that the audience had that we felt we needed to address right at then and there, that actual presentation with the PowerPoint with all the words and verbiage will be going on in that. So that should be updated as soon as our website allows it, which, as you know, is
I have one more question for you, Mayor. So those that, homes that is impacted, that may not be on this particular map since it's 2012, they will have to contact...
I would recommend, what we recommend at this point in time is to make sure that you reach out and get in contact with my office so we can create, in essence, a database of those that were impacted, not just specifically in this area, but in general throughout Reynoldsburg. So that way, we can kind of maintain and track about what's going on. There's a big difference between water that's coming in through the floor versus water, say, coming in from a cracked window or a hole in the basement, or something along those lines. And it will, it's easier for FEMA and the city to understand what the property assessments are as well with that information than without. We did get a number of people to comment and bring that information in. And while Facebook is a great tool to allow resources to be made available, if that information is not sent to the city at some point in some manner, it's hard for us to keep track of it. But what we'll continue to do is notify residents, not only through the contact information that they have provided for us, but it's also, apparently even the mail is not always the most reliable thing, because we had a number of letters returned to us. But we'll go out and, in essence, put the letters right at their door if we need to to make sure that when we're ready for that next step and we have more information to present, that all residents will be able to be aware of it, even if they happen to miss it on social media or our webpage.
Thank you. I have another question. The form that is in the packet, "Application for Evaluation Deduction for Destroyed or Damaged Real Property," who is this form for? Because we have people that were, that live in a flood zone, and then we have people who are not in a flood zone.
That would be for any resident in the Franklin County side, and there's a converse one on the Lincoln County side that is available. It's just most of the responses that we've gotten have been on the Franklin County side. This would be if any house is damaged for any particular reason. To give you an example, there are four houses that are out there right now, two of which are victims of fire. So anytime that that would be, the auditor's office from Franklin County under Michael Stenziano would actually come out and evaluate the property to give you a lower property value during the time of the reconstruction process. So you actually are assessed a lower level of taxes to help kind of relieve the burden of the homeowners a little bit in cost. And then the ultimate idea is when those homes are repaired and fixed, then they would actually come back, reassess, and move it to the level that was supposed to be there, assuming that the repairs had been done.
Thank you. If we have no other questions, we have a presentation by Larry Taylor from Volunteer
Good evening, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to be here this evening. I had a chance to meet most of you a few minutes ago. We had met on a Zoom meeting, but I haven't had the opportunity to meet you all in person, so nice to meet you all. I'm with Volunteer Energy. Our address is 790 Windmiller Drive in Bickerton. I'm an energy specialist with Volunteer Energy. Volunteer Energy is a gas and electric supplier. We've supplied gas for about 20 years, and we've been supplying electric now for a little over three years. I actually administer the gas aggregation program here at the city. For the last four years, Volunteer Energy and the city of Reynoldsburg have partnered together to bring a guaranteed savings of 8% to the Columbia Gas SEO customers, as well as provide a civic grant. To date, the gas aggregation program has provided the residents with about $91,000 in civic grant money. I just wanted to familiarize myself with you so you knew of the relation as I talk about the electric aggregation. I'm here tonight to discuss the electric aggregation and a partnership between Volunteer Energy and the city. We would like to administer the electric aggregation program. Shortly after the mayor took office, I met with him and Mr. Dorman to discuss the electric aggregation program. And at that time, the city had a consulting agreement with a company called AMPO. AMPO's responsibility was to administer the electric aggregation program, and for that, they received a fee that ultimately would be paid by the electric supplier. I simply explained how this process worked and then offered the administration here at Reynoldsburg that if Volunteer Energy were to administer the electric aggregation program, that they would not have to pay a consulting fee, but that same amount of money would be donated back to the city of Reynoldsburg in the form of a civic grant. Based on past electric usage, we're able to estimate that the electric aggregation program would generate a civic grant in the amount of about $42,000 annually. The mayor and Mr. Dorman said the current electric aggregation program didn't expire until the end of 2021. They said, hey, let's get back together and circle up and talk about this back in 2021. We met earlier in 2021, and then we met again in July of 2021. During these meetings, I explained that the city would still receive a competitive price for the residents, that the program would still be an opt-out program, and that any resident that wanted to opt out of the program could do so with no fee. There would be no penalties for opting out of the program. And that Volunteer Energy would administer the program and work with the PCO and AEP to provide a pertinent, provide all pertinent information that's needed in a timely manner. The only difference would be the civic grant. So basically, what it all boils down to is the city could stay with AMPO and pay AMPO through the supplier the fee of approximately $42,000 a year, or the city could choose to go with Volunteer Energy, where we already have a good working relationship with the gas aggregation program, and Volunteer Energy would be willing to donate that fee back to the city in the form of a civic grant, again estimated at about $42,000 a year. We believe this is a win-win for both the residents and the city. And at this time, I would like to open it up to any questions that you may have.
I actually have a couple of questions, because this had been brought to me about the aggregate program before. And, well, the first one is, when you talk about opt-out, is there a deadline for residents to opt out if they so choose to? Or they can just opt out at any time?
They can opt out at any time they'd like. Initially, we send out a letter saying, hey, the city of Reynoldsburg is implementing an aggregation program. And we send out that initial letter and give them the opportunity to opt out. But if someone is in the program for six months and they would like to opt out, they can still opt out at that point at no cost.
Okay, because that was leading to my second question about what or how are you going to inform the residents about opting out? I'm sorry. About opting out if they so choose to? Because some people prefer their current provider, and then some people might want to take a chance and go with you. But making sure that they're adequately informed about their options to opt out.
Well, typically, we would put out information through social media, through a local paper, and we would also, Volunteer Energy and myself in particular, would be available to hold town meetings, to let people know about the electric aggregation program and to give them an opportunity to ask these same questions.
I think a town hall meeting would be beneficial for those who have concerns about the aggregation program. And I understand that the city voted for this back in 2003, 2002, whatever it was. And so we have it now. But I do think a forum would be a good option than just sending something to the mail, Facebook, because not everybody has Facebook.
Absolutely.
And a lot of your senior citizens who are concerned about this program typically ain't on Facebook. So I just think that's something that would be very beneficial.
Agreed. We typically will do at least two town hall meetings. And again, it's a great opportunity for people that aren't informed or misinformed can come in and ask questions, and we can get to the bottom of it for them.
Thank you.
Thank you for those information. I have two questions. Thank you that you are going to have a town hall for that one. But my other question is, the significant number of people in Reynoldsburg speak language other than English. Do you have any plan to address that need?
Excellent question. I've never been asked that question before. We certainly can address that and would be happy to work with you individually or the council as a whole to make sure that we do that in an appropriate way for you.
All right, thank you. The next question. You say that people can opt in after six months. Suppose one of the resident wants to be in the program and opted out, and that person can come back in or no?
Yes, they certainly can. Yeah, they can opt out at any time, no penalties or fees. And then if they opt out and three months later, they decide that they want to be back in, again, there's no fees or penalties, they just opt back in.
Okay, thank you.
I think I already know the answer to this, but for the record and for people watching this meeting on Facebook Live, tell me why opting in instead of opting out is what we're dealing with here.
Typically, with aggregations, both gas and electric, if you have a opt-in as opposed to an opt-out, it's very little, very little activity and involvement, and it really isn't
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I do have a question for you. How long normally are your contracts? What are you asking the city, how long to contract with the city, I guess?
Typically, the electric aggregation program is a 24-month agreement. But the last meeting that I had with the mayor and Mr. Dorman, we also, I introduced to them and thought it might be a good idea to possibly consider a 12-month agreement. And simply put, a 12-month agreement would decrease the chances of the price to compare to be lower than the rate that we were able to offer the city. The longer that the time goes on, the better chance that there might be a decrease in the rate. Therefore, that could raise some issues with a 24-month contract. Typically, that's not the case. It does happen. But one way around that, or to help limit that, would be to introduce a 12-month agreement as opposed to 24.
Thank you. I have a question. You mentioned that there would be funds that would be returned to the city, $42,000?
That's an estimation, yes.
An estimation. And I thought I heard you say something about a grant, that the money would be in a form of a grant.
Form of civic grant, correct. It would be just like the gas aggregation money that you guys receive and can use any way that you feel is, best suits the residents.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question. So one of the issues that I hear a lot from people, specifically, excuse me, about our current electric aggregation and the situation that I personally had, is the citizens that need to be on a budget plan. So I've never had an issue with the gas ag being on the budget program. I am, and it's always worked like a charm. But with the electric ag, I've heard a lot of people that it gets all messed up. And one of the anecdotal reasons I've heard, I don't know that this is a fact, is that AEP is harder to work with than Columbia Gas is as far as keeping that budget working. So in your estimation, have you had any situations like that? And would people be able to stay on a budget?
No, it's, being on the budget is offered. I can't, I can't, I can say that with our other electric aggregation programs with AEP, there hasn't been anything brought to our attention and been an issue. But I did make a note, I can look into it, and of course, we can make sure that that's handled the best way possible, so it's not an issue.
Yeah, it could have been an excuse. It was anecdotal. But I just wanted to make sure that you, at least in your other electric ags, you've been able to keep people's budget.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, with the recommendations that, from Mr. Dorman and the mayor, I'll be putting together an agreement and hopefully be scheduled in the next few weeks for next council meeting, and we'll go from there.
Thank you for your time. Next, we have a presentation by Skilken Gold regarding sheets located at Bryce and East Main Street.
Sorry about earlier. So just to recap, I'm Sarah Gold, the Director of Development from Skilken Gold. Here to, you know, here your comment about this proposed sheets at the northeast corner of Bryce and Main. We're here to be a willing participant and partner with the city of Reynoldsburg and make a real significant investment here. So with that, I'm happy to recap anything else or just open it up for any kind of question or comment.
So I don't so much have a question for you, but I did want to make a statement because of how this is going to end up going, I'm sure. I was able to be at the presentation you made for the Planning Commission, so I've had considerably more time to know about this and stuff. had considerably more time to know about this and study this. I have no problem with your plan. I have no problem with Sheets. I'm proud Pittsburgh, born and raised. So plenty of experience with Sheets for a long time. My concern would be for the mayor and the development director in that if this is going to end up being, if the ask is going to be for council to change this to a CC district from the Innovation District, I think it would be really, looking at the zoning map, it would be really odd. You'd have this one little parcel in a sea of Bryce and Main Innovation that's CC, and it, I don't know if that's what you would consider spot zoning, but it sure seems like it to me. What I would prefer, and I'm one of seven, so you can ignore me if you want, but what I would prefer is if we considered whether, I know it's been mentioned before, that possibly leaving retail convenience, retail convenience with gas out of the Bryce and Main Innovation District was an oversight. And I would, if we were going to go a direction to possibly allow this, I would rather us reconsider the Bryce and Main Innovation District rather than spot zone a little CC zone in the middle of it. So that's, so it's not really a question for you, but it's more of a going forward, that's what I'd like to see.
Thank you.
Somewhat to Councilman Savadi's comments. I'm a West Virginia girl, and I've been lobbying development to bring in a Sheets for about three years now. So I'm happy to see you.
Thank you.
I just got to say something, because I can't let somebody from Pittsburgh and West Virginia just hog up. I'm born and raised here in central Ohio, so, but I do welcome you here.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions or comments?
Okay. Well, we really appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time, and we look forward to working with the mayor and council to go through the formal development process and make sure that we can address everything and make it work.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Yes, take care.
Do we have any other communications this evening? Next, we'll move on to our motions. A motion to approve a resolution to adopt the Franklin County 2018 natural hazard mitigation plan. Mayor Begany, will you address this motion?
Yes, Madam President, this is a, kind of a continuation of a process that began as early as 2016, where Reynoldsburg and other municipalities in the central Ohio area basically identify targeted processes, procedures, and areas for flood mitigation purposes. That plan was received and all the documentation was submitted. Now it's council's turn to basically act on it. What it allows us to do is that if we are to proceed with other functions as far as flood mitigation plans that we mentioned earlier, this would allow us to participate and be eligible for future grants that would be the option to actually pay for all of those things.
Are there any questions from council? May I have a motion to approve the Franklin County 2018 natural hazard mitigation plan? Councilmember Bryant, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Savadi, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve a resolution to recognize Latinx Heritage Month. Councilmember Bryant, please.
Sorry. All right. This is the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee meeting for September 27, 2021. Members in it. Oh.
No, yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay, well, I'm sorry. We're on the motion. Okay. I'm a little ahead of myself. So it's a motion to approve a resolution to recognize Latinx Heritage Month. I got that right, right?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas Latinx Heritage Month is an important reminder of how much strength our nation draws from our immigrant roots and values as a nation of immigrants. And whereas we celebrate the countless contributions of the more than 60 million Latinx Americans to our society and culture. And whereas Latinx Americans are the largest minority group in the United States today, with generations of Latinx Americans having consistently helped make our country strong and prosperous. And whereas the United States has benefited from the many contributions of Latin science, scientists, doctors, diplomats, military members, engineers, elected officials, and many other workers and homemakers. Whereas the United States Cabinet has four Latin Secretaries, the Secretary of Health and Human Services, Xavier Becerra, Secretary of Homeland Security, Alejandro Mayorkas, and Secretary of Education, Miguel Cardona, and Small Business Administrator, Isabel Guzman. And whereas we recognize that America cannot succeed unless Latinx or Latin families and communities succeed sharing equally in the benefits of our recovery and investments. And whereas they contribute to our nation beyond description by embodying the best of American values, including commitment to faith, family, and country. And whereas we honor and celebrate the contributions of Latinx people to our nation, we also reaffirm our commitment to extending the hand of friendship to Latin America and strengthening democracy in those regions. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Reynoldsburg, we do hereby acknowledge, celebrate, and recognize September 15 through October 15 as Latinx Heritage Month, past this 27th day of September 2021.
Thank you. May I have a motion to recognize Latinx Heritage Month? Councilmember Baker, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Strickland, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have item 10 on our agenda, are the reports. Clerk of Court report. Would the clerk please read the clerk of court report?
The clerk of court submitted monies collected from courts held on August 5, 12, 19, and 21st in the amount of $21,743.
Thank you. Next, we have liquor permit request. Deputy Chief Grisell, please.
Thank you, Madam President and members of council. This application is for a permit transfer, transfer for Nishi's Market. The permit is actually transferring from Shah Karim to a dual ownership, Qudari Ali and Shah Karim. The permit is a C1, C2 class, so that's not going to change. It's for beer, wine, and mixed beverages, and sealed containers for carryout only. The business is located and situated in an area that would not have an adverse effect on the operation of any hospitals, schools, or playgrounds, so we do not request a hearing.
Thank you. Next, we have Development, Parks, and Recreation Committee, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the Development, Parks, and Recreation Committee meeting for September 27, 2021. You know what? Members in attendance are Councilman Cotner, Councilmember Lawson, Lawson Row, Councilmember Pacarrel, myself, and you, Madam President. The first item on the agenda for the committee is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase a real property located on East Main Street to be owned by the city of Reynoldsburg for a public purpose and declaring emergency. The, yes, the ordinance have, has been returned to committee to allow for further discussion prior to taking a vote and to make an amendment. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Chair Baker and members of council, Madam President. This is just a continuation of the process for the land that is more commonly known as across the, the open field across from the cemetery. We are looking to purchase that item, and then we are working actually right now on two different development agreements that I can let City Attorney Shook kind of get into more detail on. But we hope to have those deals able to be presented to council in October, once we finish up our process here tonight, hopefully with council's consent. City Attorney Shook, if you want to add anything that I missed?
Yeah, just briefly, we are, I can probably get into more detail about one particular development agreement. We have received a letter of intent for either four or five acres on the western portion of the two parcels that are known as across from the cemetery. At this time, the letter of intent indicates that the purchaser, which is the Daimler Group, a development organization, would purchase that property for up to $190,000 an acre. At five acres, that would put their purchase at $950,000, which is less than, still less than half of the total amount of land that the council would be authorizing to purchase this evening. So that gets us very nearly to breaking even just on that particular sale, if it goes through.
We're still working on the price on that one. Just throwing it out there.
On, on the easternmost portion, that's, that's still very preliminary. If, if things go through on that, I would expect that there would be a significant announcement in the next month or so.
Any questions from the committee on this? Any from council? Okay. Seeing that there's no any further questions, I move that we amend this ordinance to add Exhibit B in, as an addition exhibit in language to the text of the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Pacarrel. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, ayes has it. This ordinance will be forwarded to council as amended. Nope, nope. Oh, that's right, the ordinance is amended. Now I need a motion to, to forward this on the council. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Lawson Row. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, seeing how their ayes have it, this ordinance will be forwarded to council as amended for emergency approval for a second reading. Okay. All right, got that one. Ordinance, the second item on the agenda is an ordinance also authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase real property located at 7277 East Main Street to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg and declaring emergency. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you again, Chair Baker, members of council, Madam President. This is the property located at 7277 East Main, which is the Moyer Automotive Facility. The next item is the property, just basically to the, that would be to the south of that for two parcels. These two areas were part of the original three that were brought to you in executive session. It just had taken us a long time due to concerns of EPA impact on these two particular properties. So I'm going to go ahead and read a relatively lengthy statement from the EPA and what the process is for here, that that's why we were waiting to do anything until we had this information. After discussing with the EPA and their technicians who wrote the study, it was found that the compound of PCE percolory thaleene was present in the soil surrounding the main structure. This was concluded to be two to three times the normal added value in the area. As alarming as this sounds, the EPA was not concerned. They found it interesting that this compound was found in the area because the normal use of PCE is a dry cleaning business. After discussing them, what the future holds for the site and the surrounding area, it was their recommendation to move forward with the demolition of the building and have EMHNT and conduct a quick soil sample thereafter. They felt strongly that the PCE was using the concrete slab as a natural conductor, and either was pulling it out of the ground or the building is leaching it to the slab and the soil as a byproduct. They concluded with the demolition of the building, they will feel the problem will fix itself with little remediation needing to be done afterwards. They felt that the fixture of mixed-use development on the site can continue, and they see no issues with desired future use. We will be asking for additional appropriations for the demolition as well as the sample soil test. EMHNT will run point on that one. The EPA did conclude with saying that this was voluntary action and that basically for a sample method. Further EPA action was not required at this point in time. This would be the third piece of the Old Town properties that we have been discussing with you, specifically with the Happy Dragon, and while not technically completely in Old Town, the PNC site. So this was the one that we finally have the ability to bring that to you. We spent a great amount of time discussing the options as far as impact on the finances with our auditors, Mr. Sisak, who is recently back from Cincinnati, where he attended a conference on, I think it's the GFAO, if I got the, GFO, I see, I know I get the alphabet soup wrong. But we did talk about it to make sure that with the pending, I guess in essence a word flip of the land across from the cemetery, as well as the inevitable and hopefully forthcoming sale of the Happy Dragon purchase agreement, we felt that we would be able to do this at this particular point in time. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the, any questions from the committee? Attorney Shook?
Just briefly, you'll, you'll notice on the purchase agreement that there's a provision that actually assigns the purchase to the Reynoldsburg Community Improvement Association. This was done in consultation with our outside legal counsel on CIC matters and advised that with the environmental issues that were raised by the Phase II assessment, that it would be in the city's best interest if the city were not an owner in the chain of title of this particular property. And so the purchase agreement includes an assignment that the deed on this property would be made out to the Reynoldsburg Community Improvement Association, and the CIC will need to conduct a meeting to determine if they are going to accept that deed. So there's still some process to go here. Thank you.
Any questions from the committee? Any from council? Okay. Well, seeing none, I, I'll, excuse me, seeing, seeing none, I will forward this ordinance on the council for its first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Pacarrel. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading. The third item, third item on this agenda is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase real property located at 1415 Water Street to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg and declaring emergency. Mr. Mayor?
Again, very similarly, this is the parcel that is directly behind the Moyer Automotive piece, and they would be combined into one parcel, and then ultimately brought into some sort of multi- or mixed-use development on that side. Same standard apply for all, all cases.
Okay. Any comments from the committee? Any questions? Any from council? Okay. Seeing none, I move we, I move we forward this ordinance on the council for its first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Lawson Row. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. This ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading. The fourth item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map for the city of Reynoldsburg for a property located at 8555 East Main Street from Innovative District to Community Commercial District. Mr. Mayor or Attorney Shook?
I defer to Attorney Shook on the rezoning process for this one.
This is an application submitted to the zoning department to rezone a parcel of land over at the corner of Taylor and Main on the northeast corner. Currently, that parcel is zoned in site, or actually Innovation District. And what the applicant is looking to do is build a Sheets, gas station, convenience store. The current zoning designation, Innovation, does not allow that as either a permitted or a conditional use, so they are seeking to rezone it as community commercial. I would note, as we were talking earlier about concerns for spot zoning and consistency in zoning with surrounding and neighboring parcels, the neighboring parcel across the street, which is the CVS, and then Catty Corner, which is the Kroger are all currently zoned community commercial. So it would not be a concern for, for spot zoning purposes.
Any comments from the committee? Any from council?
I have a question. I'm trying to understand exactly, Attorney Shook, where is the, which corner? There's a CVS, and I'm not sure I understand which corner. There's Kroger's, CVS.
Sorry, I keep turning my microphone off. It's the, it's the northeast corner, so there's currently...
Southeast side.
Southeast corner.
Yeah, northeast is a car lot.
You're right, you're right. I'm an attorney, not a, not in geography. It's actually the, the... It's actually the corner of that same intersection that has the trailer park and the open space there that's right next to that trailer park.
So the space is in front of the trailer park on that corner?
It's just to the west of that trailer park. Now, the developer is looking to buy up a lot of land in that area, including the trailer park for purposes of redevelopment.
The Sheets in itself would be a small part of a much larger development, but that's what they're leading off with. We're just in the preliminary discussions of what would be in the surrounding areas.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Lawson Rowe?
Okay, so I'm confused. There's, there's two locations that we're talking about Sheets?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Including the one that has already been approved that will be on the Broad Street side. That would be the third.
If you count the one that's going on.
That one's already, that one's already gone through the process and I don't know, I can't recall if we've actually gotten the plans for that specifically yet, but I think that's pretty close. So again, this is at council's discretion. This is, we're answering questions and they're providing the opportunity to ask for this particular process. I know the next step City Attorney Shuck can kind of go into detail with. However, we're just, at this point, we're providing them information of what the process is, not necessarily endorsing or denying anything specifically from the administrative point of view.
Correct, correct. So the process from here actually is that council would need to refer the matter back to Planning Commission to review the application and make a recommendation back to City Council, kind of like what we would do with any other zoning code change. So you're not asked, being asked to vote or approve this tonight, and I believe in my discussions with the administration, I don't think the administration's taking any pro or con position on this.
It's too early to tell. I'm very curious about the other surrounding facilities and what would be there in addition to that.
And I think that's my concern, Mayor. You know, just having Sheets come in, three different locations, and really losing out on the other possibilities. So that is concern for me. That's all right, thank you.
Okay. I'm sure in due time, a lot of questions, I'm sure a lot of answers will be offered up from the administration regarding this ordinance. So is there any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. Seeing none, I move we forward this ordinance to council for a first reading and direct the Planning Commission to review this application and submit a recommendation to council. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Pacarrel?
I'm not...
No, okay, I thought you was, I apologize.
I'm asking question, that it's not going back, it is going back to Planning Commission, right?
Yes.
I'm not seconding for going back to the council, going back to the Planning Commission to review. I have not done homework on this one, I want to do more.
I just saw your finger move, okay. Still waiting on the second. All right, second by Councilman Cotner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, ayes have it. This will be forwarded on to the Planning Commission for a first reading, as there's no further business in front of the Development Park and Recreation Committee. I return this back to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Next, we have Public Safety Law and Court Committee, Councilmember Bryant.
Now, this is the Public Safety Law and Courts Committee meeting for September 7th, 2021. Members in attendance are Councilmember Cotner, Councilmember Lawson Rowe, Councilmember Pacarrel, myself, and President Jenkins. And first item is that Councilmember Baker would like to discuss amending the city's code regarding speeding in a residential area. So, Councilmember Baker.
Getting a lot of airtime today. So I asked for this to be put on the agenda, discuss about how can we stop the speeding? I know we can't fully stop if people were on the speed, but something the city can do to try to alleviate speeding, especially on Priestley, especially on Rose Hill, especially on, basically all over the city. And so I think that it's a discussion that we should have, and I do want to say, I don't want this to be a month, two months, four-year discussion. I do think we should come up with something. It might not be perfect, but at least it's something to try to stop the speeding that's going on in the city of Reynoldsburg. And so I wanted to bring this up for open any ideas, because I did forewarn at the last council meeting I was bringing this up, so if anybody have any ideas that they would like to throw out, now's the time. And I'll start this carousel, which is increasing the fines for those flying through our residential neighborhoods. We have a lot of families, a lot of new families moving in with children, and we have cars speeding, you know, speeding down these residential areas. And I've always been told, if you want somebody to do some, do something, hit them in the pockets. And I think that we should increase the fine for speeding. And how that happens, that could be logistically talked about, but that's just an idea that I had. I didn't know if anybody else had some sort of idea or want to put something out there.
Well, yeah, I've been talking about speed tables for years, but haven't gotten any traction with that. Mr. Mayor, do we have anything in the works?
Yes, that's a little louder than I expected. The Traffic and Transportation Committee that was established early last year has actually met on this with one area of our community that has definitely provided the most complaints of speeding, and that would be Priestley from Wagner Road to basically the county line in that area. One of the options that the residents are very strenuous about is increase the enforcement in the area, which obviously is only going to be able to do so much, because once the officer leaves the area, the normal concerns would continue. So the conversation has then shifted, talking with members of that community. They have gone out and looked at petitions and they brought a number of things back for the installation of some sort of combination of speed tables or speed bumps in that area. A majority of the residents in there, and again, I could break it down by street at some other point in time, but basically a majority of them would prefer to have it in those particular areas. What we feel here in the administration is that we have to do this on a, kind of like a systematic basis. So the first thing we did is we started with a stop sign that was flashing with LED lights as a first phase, and then obviously increased patrols as a second phase. And then after that, what we're looking at is potentially a plan that will be presented before council to add speed tables in certain areas where speeding is prevalent. That being said, everyone knows that this may or may not even stop the speeding that goes on. A lot of this is at the personal discretion of the individual drivers. They can be the drivers within the community. It was actually mentioned at one point in time. There was a resident call for people that had been rolling a stop sign on First Gate, and it had been so bad that they called and they called, and so we had our motorized traffic unit go out there, and they did a great job for the days that they were there. And I actually got a message from the individual saying, "Thank you, we appreciate it, we need to save, you know, the potential of something really bad happening." And so then I thought it was great, because it was relatively rare that we get congratulatory or thanks messages. And then the next day, I got another message from this individual who said that her husband accidentally went through a stop sign and got a ticket as well. She was not upset, she was actually kind of pleased with the irony of it all, but what it means is that a lot of times these incidents, whether they be going through the stop signs or speeding in general, are in fact done by those individuals that live and work in the area typically, especially in those areas where you're looking in the residential areas. So this is a step process that we would go, again, with that speed table society kind of broken down engineering-wise in certain strategic areas. And if we are able to see some positive feedback from the community, maybe a reduction in the overall amount of speeding in the area, then we would use this as kind of our tester to take to other different parts of the community that may also deal with this. We're also looking, when it comes to future development, to make sure that specifically Priestley is a unique thing, because it is such a narrow road in that particular area, that there's very limited options as far as some of the other more non-invasive ways to slow traffic down. So we're going to make sure that in those other developed areas, that we allow for future potential in terms of options to actually slow the traffic down.
Thank you. This was your baby, so if you want to lead discussion?
I am, thank you. Is there any, any other, Councilmember Strickland?
Thank you, Councilmember. So I do have a question regarding Rose Hill, because Rose Hill is also a big factor too, especially coming around that bend. Is there a way that we can put maybe those flashing lights for people right before the bend to start, you know, slowing down as they're coming around that bend?
It's a possibility. I think the first thing that we would probably do is we would work with RPD to put a, I guess you could say are, one of maybe the blind monitors, the monitor speed in that particular area, so we can get some data to show what is the actual speed. What I've noticed, and for those of you that have had the opportunity to join the Citizens Police Academy or those that will, there's a big difference between the speed that people think cars are going and the actual speed that the cars are going. So the first thing we would have to do is gather the data for that, and then at that point in time, we can figure out what's going on. Now, later in October, you will be, have the opportunity to ask our engineers from EMHNT as well as OHM for potential issues when it comes to the Civic Park redesign that may ultimately have a secondary entrance onto Rose Hill. And so whatever we do, we will probably keep that, you know, in mind as well, because if we do have a secondary entrance off of Rose Hill into Civic Park, then obviously we want to strategically place it and have the barriers to slow traffic down in that area as well. But that is one area that has come to our attention as well. Bryce Road north of Main Street is also another area, First Gate is another one. And then I'm sure right now on Facebook, we're getting every other road that people speed on right now.
How soon could we actually get that, so we can start collecting that data?
I'll get with the chief and the deputy chief after the meeting today, and then I'll inform councilors how quickly we can get that out there. I know that there is a schedule that they do, and when I say schedule, it's typically complaint-driven, so the area that it's in right now, you know, it will finish out whatever it's, you know, temporary run is, and then the next available opportunity that would move there, which usually I can only imagine a couple of weeks at most. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, Councilman Pacarrel?
Thank you, Councilman, for bringing this. We were talking with the resident the other day in the Priestley drive. The first person was driving maybe 20, 25, other person came maybe 45, 50, and he just hung the guy who was driving, the good driver, and he hung, dropped over him. So I think that those kind of people need to be reminded and fined. I totally agree with this, and I think we should move forward with this.
One thing that I did talk to the chief of police about is, there's always a perception, I'm not saying it's true or not true, but there is a perception that there is a somewhat of a buffer of a certain number of miles an hour if a speed limit is 25. You know, sometimes people say there's a five mile or a 10 mile an hour buffer or something like that. Obviously, I would never say that that is the actual case whatsoever, especially with the deputy chief right behind me. However, we did discuss what would happen is, you know, with the ideas of the strict enforcement of that. Part of the concern that I expressed to the residents with stricter enforcement is, again, the impact that it has on the individuals, the socioeconomics of the area where the individuals are impacted with, as well as the impact on the city attorney's office when it's dealing with some of those things. A number of times, the members of council have expressed concern about the number of people in our court system, the opportunity about suspended licenses and how this would play a role into it. That being said, obviously, when people are going 50 miles an hour, it's not, that's not the issue. It's some of the other ones that are out there. The 50 miles an hour are no questions. But at the same time, please be prepared that if we do increase or tighten up any perceived buffer in that area, I'm sure a number of residents will be more than happy to express their concerns when they get those tickets at the process. Just throwing that out there for you.
Councilmember Bryant?
If we are going to talk about raising penalties for such speeding, I think we also need to talk about people using the left turn lanes as passing lanes on Lancaster or on Rose Hill or on Taylor. I've been passed between Rose, or on Rose Hill between Main and the high school.
Well, there are, and again, this goes way beyond the scope of a couple of things. RPD has been informed of that since, you know, obviously with schools starting up, which seems like it wasn't that long ago, but we're, you know, we're almost in October now. They were on increased patrols, you're seeing a lot more officers in the speed zones in those area. However, again, it's very similar to everything else. If the officer is not there in that moment in question, they cannot do it. I do know that State Representative Rich Brown had tried to advance some legislation to put cameras on buses, so that way the cameras could actually identify those cars that go around the bus specifically and things of that nature. But again, it's about an enforcement issue, and the rest of it is just dealing with personal responsibility. The adults in the room teaching their kids the right way about that and things of that nature, which is a major issue. Again, RPD does a fabulous job. We've seen a number of increase in the terms of speed zone, school tickets that go along with that, but you're right, buses have been passed, ambulances have been passed, there's no, I would say the common courtesy aspect is somewhat lacking in a lot of ways, and I'm not sure if we can legislate or monetarily, you know, quantify that, but it's definitely something we all need to do a better job on.
Councilmember Lawson Rowe?
Hi. In one of my past lives, I actually was in a community where they had like neighborhood town halls, if you will. And to the mayor's point, many of those offenders of the speeding and traffic violations actually are the members that live right there in that neighborhood. And so I wonder if there's an opportunity for us to have like mini neighborhood town halls and have education and maybe partner with our officers or traffic patrol.
I see what you're getting at.
I mean, if, that's where I'm coming from in terms of offering, you know, anything to the discussion, because education is key. And a lot of times, we think it's, you know, someone that's not in our neighborhoods that are coming through speeding, but it's really, you know, sad to say, it's those that live right there in the community.
As, as I promised, this was not a setup question, but thank you for giving me the opportunity to plug our first town hall of such nature, which will actually be on, I believe, October 13th at Baldwin Road Middle School in that particular area. So that might be something that we can add to the list of topics to discuss. This is a town hall in conjunction with Reynoldsburg Police Department, Reynoldsburg City Schools, and the city of Reynoldsburg to address these issues and many others that face that particular community. We hope to be able to start this town hall in cooperation with the school district and move it to other areas throughout Reynoldsburg that would be possible to make this an increase all the way across. Thank you for the free plug.
Any other comments? Okay, I do think that this was a very healthy discussion, and those of you who in this council know me, that once I get a ball moving, I'm going to keep on pushing it to across the finish line. So I'm hoping that this is something to start, that where we can at least try something to alleviate a problem that, you know, has happened, I'm sure not just here in Reynoldsburg, but other municipalities and towns and stuff. But anyway, that's all I have. I just, I look forward to seeing progress as we move forward.
Councilmember Baker, just briefly, and I know we had discussed this before, about whether, you know, we need to take some legislative action to increase penalties in a residential district, or if there's some way to look at those penalties outside of legislation. Currently, you know, speeding in a residential area doesn't give, doesn't receive any special treatment in our speeding ordinance. However, as some communities have done, and as we have the flexibility to do, the mayor's office sets the waiver schedule for speeding tickets. So you know that amount that gets written on the bottom of the ticket, not that I've ever received one, that tells you how much you need to pay so you don't have to go to court. It's actually the mayor's office that sets that amount. Now, it's capped out, the maximum amount of fine on a minor misdemeanor is $150, and our court costs are 95. So the mayor would have some flexibility to adjust the waiver amount in residential areas. Currently, it's $120. We would have the flexibility to increase that up to 160, as we've discussed before, and discuss that with the mayor's office, and I believe we're open to doing that, so that the monetary penalties in those districts for speeding are at least a little bit more severe than they are in other areas.
Appreciate it, Attorney Shuck. Anything else? Councilwoman Bryant, this is your committee.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Baker. We don't have anything else on the schedule, but I thought that we would be having a discussion at this meeting on masks. Mr. Bruss brought that up, but I had thought it was already on the agenda. Like to have a quick conversation on that. I spend all day, every day in Columbus where I'm required to wear a mask at work. It's a little weird coming back to Reynoldsburg and seeing practically no one with masks on. I don't like having to mandate anything, just because it's something that gets people riled up. But I agree with Mr. Bruss's statement that this needs to be about science, not politics, and we need to look at the numbers as they are increasing and putting more and more people at risk. So does anybody have any thoughts on doing something in that regard? Councilmember Baker?
You know, it couldn't hurt to look at something, because just today... You know, it couldn't hurt to look at something because just today, I had a coworker, I had to deliver some materials to her office so she could work at home because her son has COVID, and she's been exposed to it. And so it is a serious issue that's going on. In my house, just last week, there was a potential, thank God, nobody in my house had it, but there were the symptoms there to have COVID. And it's something that we do need to take serious because I really was hoping it was going to get better. I really did. But apparently, we're trending in a direction that none of us wanted to see. And I hate wearing masks. I'm going to be honest, I hate wearing it. Especially when you're walking up and down the stairs in the parking garage and stuff like that, or you're going to the store and you forget you got to go back. It's annoying. But I'd rather deal with annoyance and be living than not dealing with it and being six feet under. But that's just my thought.
Thank you for bringing this up. I was going to hold it off to the end, but thank you. I was sick for three weeks, and I thought I was going to die with COVID. It is serious. It is something that this virus is taking people out. I just heard a grandmother on Saturday say her 17-year-old is in ICU fighting for her life because she had COVID, and she called in in school. And so this is real, and we cannot make this about politics. I do have to wear my mask when I'm coming and going. I was in Krogers, I had my mask on. So I believe in the mask, but as Councilwoman Bryant stated, there may be some pushback. But also, as Mr. Norm said, we have to make some tough decisions.
I did have a conversation with a councilmember from Gehanna where they are, rather than pushing for a mandate, they are bringing in an ordinance that would allow individual private businesses to make the decision for themselves on whether it can be, whether they mandate it in their premises. I don't know how that would work or if it would solve the goals of keeping everybody alive.
Councilmember Bryant, those businesses are already allowed to do that?
Pardon?
Those businesses can already mandate that. It's their property.
Okay, well, then that doesn't solve anything. Councilmember Lawson Row?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to share that our children are wearing masks in schools all day, every day. And I had an opportunity to visit one of our schools, and our students are in the classroom, and they keep their mask on. They don't complain. The teachers are phenomenal. They keep their mask on. They may lower it in order to, when they're at the front of the room. So I don't see why we cannot ask adults to do the same thing our children are doing. Thus, I'm masked. I ask my kids and my grandkids to be masked. I would hope that we would all be adults.
Okay, anybody else? President Jenkins?
Yes, thank you for bringing this to council this evening. I've always been in favor of masks, and normally when you go in most of the stores outside of Reynoldsburg, you are encouraged to wear a mask, or it is enforced where if you don't have one, they will give you one. But I've always been in favor of mandating masks or at least encouraging our city to be conscious of the fact that we should all wear a mask. I know that it's a tough decision, but I've always been in favor of it. But I don't have a vote on it, unfortunately, but I do think it's something we should consider.
Going once, going twice. I return this meeting to President Jenkins.
Thank you. We do not have a Public Service and Transportation Committee meeting this evening, so we will move on to Finance and Administration Committee. Councilmember Savadi.
Thank you, President Jenkins. This is the Finance and Administration Committee meeting for September 27th, 2021. Members in attendance are Councilmember Baker, Councilmember Bryant, Councilmember Strickland, myself, and President Jenkins. The first item on the agenda is an ordinance to authorize the auditor to establish a new agency fund account. Thank you for waiting patiently until this point. Auditor?
Chairman Savadi, President Jenkins, thank you all. This legislation is required for our new judge seven, and it establishes a new fund to collect the money in. It can go a full three readings, but it needs to pass as an emergency.
All right, are there any questions for the auditor from the committee? From council? All right, seeing none, I move to forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Do I have a second? Second from Councilmember Baker. Any further discussion? I guess before I go on, do we need to add emergency language if this needs to be? Should we do that now? Okay.
If you just make a motion to amend it, to add the emergency language, it'll be on for the next read.
All right, so I already have a motion and a second to send it to council.
It already, it already has emergency language.
Does it? Oh, okay. So it's just not on your paper? I'm sorry, Councilmember Savadi, so we're good.
Perfect, I don't have to do anything then. So all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries, and it will be forwarded to council for its first reading. Second item on the agenda is an ordinance to transfer funds for the purchase of real properties at 7277 East Main Street and 1415 Water Street to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg and declaring an emergency. Auditor Sisette?
President Jenkins and Chairman Savadi, members of council, this legislation is required to pay for the land purchases tonight, and it comes from the general fund to go to the capital improvement fund for projects, hopefully that we'll see completed by the end of the year, or at least the city reimbursed for by the end of the year.
Two out of the four. That's what we're working towards.
All right, any questions from the committee to the auditor or to anyone? Counsel? No?
Real quick, and I know because the auditor asked a question about this. So this is for the automotive technicians' purchase and then the parcel behind. In the purchase agreement, again, we have an assignment to the Community Improvement Corporation. I would expect at the next council meeting, the first meeting in October, we will have an agreement to present to council between the CIC and the city of Reynoldsburg so that when the CIC is able to resell that property, the proceeds are returned to the city.
Are there any questions? All right, so then I'll move to forward this ordinance to council for a first reading. Do I have a second?
Is the emergency language on this?
Yeah, yes.
This one is on there. Is this a three? Well, this, two.
No, this is.
Okay.
Two.
All right. So I have a second from Councilmember Strickland. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? All right. Any opposed? All right, this ordinance will be forwarded, motion carries this ordinance will be forwarded to council for its first reading. That concludes the business to the Finance and Administration Committee, and I return the meeting to President Jenkins.
Next, we have the consent agenda for emergency adoption. Items 11A through E are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for emergency adoption unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward for an emergency approval. Would the clerk please read items 11A through E?
A, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with complete general construction pertaining to Main Street Utility Relocation Project, Main Street and Lancaster Avenue intersection, appropriating funds, waive competitive bidding, and declaring an emergency. B, an ordinance to transfer funds for the purchase of real properties to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg and declaring an emergency. C, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for city insurance for 2021, '22, waive competitive bidding, and declaring an emergency. D, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Franklin County auditor and declaring an emergency. E, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Leaking Area Auditor and declaring an emergency.
May I have a motion to approve these ordinances?
So moved.
Councilmember Savadi may have a second.
Second.
Councilmember Baker, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember PACaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Madam President, that was 7-0.
These ordinances are approved with seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. Next, we have legislation for emergency adoption. Would the clerk please read item 12A?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase real property located on East Main Street to be owned by the city of Reynoldsburg for a public purpose and declaring an emergency. And this legislation was amended in committee.
Is there any other discussion? May I have a motion to approve this ordinance?
So moved.
Councilmember Baker may have a second.
Second.
Councilmember PACaro, any other further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember PACaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Madam President, that was 7-0.
These ordinances are approved with seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. Next, we have a consent agenda for a first reading. Items 13A through E are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a first reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a first reading. Would the clerk please read item 13A through E?
A, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase real property located at 7277 East Main Street to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg and declaring an emergency. B, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase real property located at 1415 Water Street to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg and declaring an emergency. C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map for the city of Reynoldsburg for a property located at 8555 East Main Street from Innovation District I to Community Commercial District CC. D, an ordinance to authorize the auditor to establish a new agency fund account and declaring an emergency. E, an ordinance to transfer funds for the purchase of real properties at 7277 East Main Street and 1415 Water Street to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg and declaring an emergency.
These ordinances stand for a first reading. Next, we have a consent agenda for a second reading. Items 14A through D are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a second reading unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a second reading. Would the clerk please read items 14A through D?
A, an ordinance to approve the final plat plan for Rose Hill Town Home Development. B, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EMHNT for the engineering plans and preparation of bid documents for the 2022 street and sidewalk maintenance and repair program and appropriating funds therefore. C, an ordinance authorizing EMHNT to conduct survey and preliminary engineering design services for wagon or road improvements and appropriating funds therefore. D, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Civic Engage Central for website design and appropriate funds.
These ordinances stand for a second reading. Next, we have a consent agenda for a third reading. Items 15A through C are part of a consent agenda. These ordinances stand for a third reading and approval unless someone wants to remove an item for further discussion. Council will move forward with a vote on these ordinances. Would the clerk please read items 15A through C?
A, an ordinance accepting, approving, and ratifying the submitted recommendations of several city of Reynoldsburg tax incentive review councils. B, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to purchase real property to be used by the city of Reynoldsburg. And C, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Rumpke Trash and Recycling for recycling processing generated by residential units, municipal facilities, and various special events in the city of Reynoldsburg, Ohio.
May I have a motion to approve these ordinances? Councilmember Bryant may have a second?
Second.
Councilmember PACaro, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryant?
Aye.
Councilmember Strickland?
Aye.
Councilmember Savadi?
Aye.
Councilmember PACaro?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson Row?
Aye.
And Councilmember Cotner?
Aye.
Madam President, that was 7-0.
These ordinances are approved with seven affirmative votes and no negative votes. Next, we have other council matters. Does anyone on council have any further items that they would like to discuss this evening?
No.
Councilmember Bryant?
I'm just going to put in a plug for Blues and Brews this weekend. It's a new event, so we've got a Reynoldsburg resident playing with Mill Street Blues, or I think that's what they're called, Mill Street Blues, yeah. And they're quite good. I've heard them before, so get your lawn chairs and meet me in the park.
And what time is that?
It's 4:00 to 9:00.
4:00 to 9:00, thank you. Councilmember Baker?
She beat me to that one, but I just want to say congratulations to the Raider football team for winning Friday, and also congratulations to the homecoming king and queen who won. I, yeah, sorry, tongue-tied. Still continuing with my tradition of thanking our law enforcement, our nurses, our doctors, our frontline workers who are still helping us get through this pandemic. So I'm still not going to forget them. And it was a third thing, but to be honest, I don't remember. So I'm just going to end with that.
Do we have any other comments from council this evening?
Oh, yeah, that's what it was. The mayor's shaking his head because he knows what I'm about to say. I told you so. Go Browns.
Go Bengals.
Boo.
Go Bengals.
Boo, you're kind of quiet over there today.
And we're sorry for the Steelers, for their loss. For upcoming meetings, there will be council, MBZBA, and Planning Commission meetings. Council will meet Monday, October 11th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. If there's no other further business, this meeting is adjourned, and the time is 8:12. Thank you.
No, the packet was light.